Good evening, I'll call the meeting to order, it's 6:15, a little bit past rise of time. And welcome to tonight's meeting, that in person. And if you would all join me and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic of America, the representative of one nation, under our individual but liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And Secretary Slager, we could have more comments. Yes, Trustee Bowser.
Here.
Trustee Revard.
Here.
Trustee Vanderheide, she is excused of absence for vacation. Treasurer Gilmore.
Here.
Secretary Slager, here. Vice President Schachner.
Here.
President Reed, here. Thank you, and we have established a forum. That brings us to our next item, which would be the adoption of the agenda. And I am going to make a motion that we're going to be adding discussion item number up. The 2021-22 Communicable Disease Space Mass Testing and Vaccine Protocols. So entertain a motion to add that to the agenda.
So move.
Support. Any discussion? We had none. Vice President Schachner. Yes. Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Revard.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes. We are approved to put that item on the agenda. Next item up is gratitude. And I'd like to start by thanking Trent and Matt for hosting the listening meeting that was last Monday to the community. Thank you for doing that. It was, they had rave reviews.
We tried our best.
So that was wonderful that you did that for us. And is there anything you want to share?
I would just add on to that, thank you Scott and Truss for joining us. That was very helpful to have your expertise there. And I think it was a good conversation overall, and really appreciate that you can speak that.
And I would just add that I would like to share my thoughts. Very kind, very helpful.
I'll just add just a shout out to our coaches of various teams. I know they're still putting together informal practices and having training opportunities and just challenging our kids to show condition over the summer, so I'll just appreciate all of their hard work to make sure that they're actively staying healthy.
I'm thankful for everybody who is reaching out via email and the people that came to the community forum to share their thinking lists. I really appreciate them doing that, I know sometimes that can be hard to do. But I certainly appreciate the courage and openness that these parents and teachers have shared by contacting me.
I would agree, and it's frustrating because, and we think, I'm grateful for the patience that people are having because we can't always keep up with social media in our responses. And we want them to be thoughtful, so even though it's not immediate right then, we're working on that.
I'd like to add too also, like Heidi, I really do appreciate like everybody's emails that she has, that you have forwarded that to us to keep us in the mood and that we're aware of everything going on, and so I really do appreciate the communication that's going on with the board and superintendent, and I think it's helping us.
Grateful for the staff, teachers, support staff, food service, transportation, maintenance, and our administrative team for investing hours and hours into providing some meaningful summer learning experiences for students on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays all summer long. And I'm also thankful for the progress that we're making on our projects despite it all. We're still making great project progress, and we're ahead of schedule. I don't mean that to jinx anything, but we're still looking great for the middle school project and then also for the project receiving.
Okay. I'll throw in there as far as a gratitude. Very grateful to all of the churches in our community. Their prayers for the school, for our nation. I think of my own church, Cross the River First Baptist, actually I didn't see what you said. Just the immense support that they give, not only myself, but just teachers in our community and students. And I just think of all of the churches and all of the community that is supporting us and behind us, and I'm very grateful for that. I know that I need a lot of prayer to do this job, and I don't know if you guys feel the same, but I definitely need some wisdom beyond my own. So especially with all of the new things coming out and up that we will be faced with. I think that it's, I'm very grateful for our prayers.
I agree. All right, we will move on with our consent items, and I would entertain a motion.
So move.
Support. I'll call the roll. Vice President Schachner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Revard.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes, consent items are approved as presented. So at this time, we are at closed session portion of our meeting, so I would entertain a motion for us to move into closed session. Support. Any discussion?
Can we share where the score is?
Oh, yes, a person went to contract negotiations for a negotiation. Oh, Vice President Schachner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Revard.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed, yes. We will move into closed session, we don't anticipate that it will be a really long time. Okay, we've been doing this for minutes, we show that we've rolled back into open session at 6:43. All right, so we'll move into our discussion portion of our meeting. And first up, we have 2020-21 final budget resolution from Chris Monahan, Chris, if you just want to travel right through the first three and identify where we go. So we're not looking at each other. Sure.
Sure, and we'll be brief, I promise, so we don't have to be big slices. So. As you all know, second, second time through the budget hearing, this one was changed from the presented budget of the last meeting. So I won't go through everything again. So for the 2020-21, the current year final budget, very, very subtle changes. So I just took one more brush through the budget, and it's behind Scott's screen there. But there was really just a change, a slight decrease of about $74,000. It's on my screen, about $74,000 increase in revenue, and it really is attributable to just two things. I had to decrease our state revenue because just getting a literacy grant tied out for revenue to match what we were receiving, and I had it too much. And then we had to move our summer school stipends to the next fiscal year because of some holdups in the state legislature, which we've been dealing with. So those will be paid out actually on Friday, which is the second day of the 21-22 fiscal year, so I had to make that shift. It's just a slight change in next year. So that was revenue side. And then just about $43,000 of those expenditures, you can read it on the screen, but really it's attributable just going through and find to the company. You know, what I knew in two weeks that transpired between when I finalized the last budget and this one. So really no changes to note that'll work. Jen, if you could just touch my screen, it'd be awesome. Give the overview. There it is. Okay, so this is the budget, it's in board book as well. But if you get down here to the very bottom, final budget, we're going to end, as I estimate, the end of the fiscal year '21. We'll be adding the fund balance, one million, 250,000 pounds, so very close to what was presented at last on 14. Still very, very healthy financial condition. So if you have any questions for me, please reach out, but that's, that's pretty much how it's presented last meeting. And then for the next year, this is something that I made a change on Friday. So if you recall back, I don't typically make changes this late in the game with the budget. But I had projected that we would see a $300 per pupil increase for next year. And we got some significant news on Friday that House Bill 4411 passed, and it was going to the Senate. All indications were it was going to pass the Senate with a foundation allowance increase all the way to $8,700 per pupil. So I put the language actually in there, you can see that that's what the foundation will be. Again, it's not, it's not signed, sealed, delivered yet, but I'm going with the best estimation possible. I've fact checked, that's what amendments are for. It's going to have a pretty significant change. I wasn't going, I wasn't going to change the budget for '21-22. Coming into this meeting now, I was just going to say as presented on the 14. But that's a pretty, pretty big deal. So that's going to make a change of $901,000 to our budget, adding $300 per student. And so what that does is that takes our expenditures, we're going to exceed our revenue, we were going to be in the red by 923,000 for next fiscal year election, just above break even or a little low at 68,000. So that's what I have presented this evening, again, going off the latest and the greatest, that's the best information that I have. I do think that's going to happen, there's a real strong stance, it seems, and plan seems to really support education. So that's what I'm asking you to do. Questions about that or processes, what needs to come? I thought we had news by today, didn't happen. We're on some recess on Friday. I can't do that, so I'm sorry. Before I go any further, I'll be your friend. I'll go back. So I flew right through, I flew right through, the first two slides were the 2021 final budget. That was the 21-22, and this is the 21-22 original budget here in green. So you can see all the detail of this, it's a one-page budget here in green. So our update will be added. Again, that's all in board book. And that's that. The next thing, item C on our discussion, is the school loan revolving one. This is an annual application that we have filed. And so it's not up for action tonight, it'll be up for action in July. So I just did a one-page slide to try to explain this, there was a question about it last year, if we can run through it. But it's required, every district in the state has to do it. Basically, we have our seven mills of debt bonds. So every, every property owner in Cedar Springs has to pay those seven mills they come directly to, they go to township for the city, and then the city pays us. So where am I on here? Well, we'll go through what's required this year. So we have three debt bonds that have principal payments in the next fiscal year, this is the 21-22. And that's our 2012 refunding, our 2016, we got 2016 as well. And then 2018, you can see that those principal payments equal over $5 million, okay? And then we have to pay interest, we have to pay November 1 and Day 1 interest payments, those total about $1.8 million. Total required just shy of $7 million that we have to pay on our existing debt in next fiscal year. Okay? One problem with that is our property tax collections will only bring in about $4.8, $4.9 million, which is short. And that's the purpose of the school loan revolving fund, is to borrow that money from the state, pay it back at 3% interest rate. If you recall, back in May, we refunded our school bond loan on at about 1%, 1% interest rate to save the districts money. So anyways, we'll have to borrow as a stand about 2.2 million. We won't do this until April of '22 to meet our debt service payments. And it's very common, most districts that issue debt have to do this. The good news is, and I did not put it on here, this will be the last year that Cedar Springs will have to borrow. After this year, we will be in repayment mode. The primary reason is, I believe, the 2016, let's look back at my notes. One of our three principal payments this year is the last one. After that, we've got it spaced out really nicely, so that the 4.8 to 5 million that we bring in each year will cover what we have to pay in all of our debt. So it'll be good, we can really make some headway. So this is something that requires more approval, not this evening, it's a standard state of Michigan implication. It's in board book for you to review. If you have any questions, because now it's like, well, we have to answer it for it now, obviously. But that just needs to get to the state by August 1st, so once again, we're quite a bit ahead. And that is discussion on the receipt.
Yes, is our rate of interest based on our financial standard or is it standard across the state?
Standard across the state. Yep, it's 3%. I don't really know why or how they adjusted, it's 3%. But that's why with the current rate market, the way it is, a lot of districts are refunding, which we'll look at again. You know, if we can save $200,000, $300,000, $400,000 for taxpayers, we'll do it.
And you mentioned a lot of districts, it's part of the district.
Yeah.
What, if you could estimate, 80% of all districts?
It depends, it depends on where districts are, if there's ever been. So like next year, we'll go, we'll be off, I mean, we'll still be part of it, but we won't be borrowing anymore, we'll be paying for all four years, and that's the big thing. I would guess 60%. I had some people on the spot about it, but you know, it's, again, there are districts in the state that have to borrow for general bonds because they can't, you know, we don't get a state aid favor from the state in September. So a lot of districts, for example, they don't have enough cash flow, they borrow from the state at a 4% or 5% interest rate, just to make payroll and things like that. That's why, one of the reasons why it's nice to have a fund balance like we do, so we want to do that. Obviously, the rich get richer, and poor get poorer, paying the interest on your, it's nice to not be in both of that. I can, I can, if you'd like me to research it, I can see if I can find some.
I was trying to establish.
Yeah.
How standard.
Yeah. No, it's a great question. It just really, it really ties down to, you know, as, as you issue debt through either refundings or through capital projects like the 21 bonds, the timing of when those principal payments are going to fall, really, so, yeah. There's that. It's nice being in person, it's great. So much better than being on the screen. Okay, I'll come back there and take this off.
Chris is traveling back this week. Our next discussion item up is Cedar Springs Education Association contract with Chris and staff presenting.
So really, I just wanted to share with the board how much I appreciated the spirit of cooperation and the willingness for members of the CSBA to work with us. It was a scenario where both parties felt left the table feeling as though they were treated fairly and with respect. We didn't always agree on everything, but at the end of the day, we were able to reach an agreement that really served both the staff and the district. And so it was really a good, a good negotiation session.
I'll have that on both action and on for any of those. All right, that brings us to discussion item B, and that is the superintendent evaluation. And we all have received self-evaluation of Scott in, we have our MASP forum that we worked off from. So to start off the conversation, I would just like to point out that a lot of superintendents choose to have their evaluations in closed session. Scott has continued and chosen to have his in closed session, so that speaks for transparency. And a few of the highlights that we, as we talk, we talk about other things, but one of the bigger ones is Scott's leadership was instrumental in the passage of COVID-19. And his administrative skill has ensured that the promised construction projects have started. And it would be, how can we not talk about leadership during COVID-19 pandemic? And he made the courageous decision to return in-person learning when many school districts in Michigan decided to remain remote. So that was keeping our students in the forefront of his mind. And we don't know how many ways COVID-19 is further going to challenge us, but superintendent Smith continues to listen to the needs of students, parents, teachers, and staff. And so we may commence with the evaluation discussion, it is on for action.
So artifacts that were included in board book. So I included breakdowns of each of the five primary sections. The governance of board relations, the board of the group, community relations, component of staff relations, the business and finance, instructional leadership components. In each section, there are comments in how I linked back specific elements of the year and also tied it back to a flight plan. I also included three documents that were rather robust and linked that really helped to support the variety of different types of things that we did over the course of the year. So I included Snapchat, a copy of my calendar, basically, a copy of our MGM workbook, so that is, so our principals meet twice a month, and directors all share in the planning and the leadership behind those meetings. And so the MGM workbook is a running, basically a running agenda for each of those meetings scheduled across the course of the year. And then I also included our central office, we put whole notes. So every Monday morning at 8:30, we sit down and really take a look at the week and take a look at the weeks ahead. So I included all of those notes for your review as well.
I want to jump in, from a business standpoint, one thing I've noticed is all of the tying into the flight plan. When you walk into a room that they've been working in, you can see the E5s of, you know, and the different categories of the flight plan. And it always ties back to the vision mission, and I think that's quite good.
That was the one comment I wanted to make too, highlighting the, the vision and really just the determination to stick with that flight plan and just feelings that as a guy, just being super intentional. So, yes, I really appreciate your attention.
I would comment on the financial part of our district. And you and the team that you put together, the process that you've gone through with the, with the bond, the budget, always in line and on target. The audits that we have have been perfect under your leadership. A lot of things that I, as I go through, I look at financial stock, and it's very exciting as a board member to be able to provide our community with something very important within the, within the dollar amount that we have to give it. And to put a fund balance in the banking, but so I appreciate that. Number two, things get pretty difficult sometimes, and I love the team that you put together to deal with the difficult times. Unfortunately, we're going to lose Matt, we lost him, I can think, but I'm sure that in time you will find the perfect person to take that role or a role that built in those deep. You have your team here, right? And I just can't thank you enough for, for putting together a team that's outstanding.
I cannot do without you. Chris and Jen and Matt and Stacy and Ken and Beth. We have it all.
That's Scott, it's leadership.
I'll just add too, I appreciate all the additional documentation that I wanted to make. Should be a good day, should be not, but I just think that's super helpful, I have any things to reflect back on. We knew you were doing a lot, you know, but just to, just be at all, again, just intentionality. There is one other thing I would just highlight is your availability, you know, as we have had a very difficult year, year and a half. Just lots, lots of time that you had to spend fielding questions and comments and disagreements, whether it's on the team or outside of the team or the community, but you stepped into that, and we're eager, eager to step into that and have those conversations.
Yeah, Scott, I'm thankful, I think you've done a great year. I think your team's done a great job. It has been a really difficult year, it's been a difficult year for parents, for the students that are doing remote or in person. I mean, it's just been a difficult year for everybody. And the way that you have led through that in order to make sure that our kids could be in person as much as humanly possible, while trying to comply with the laws and inform people and, and try to make sure that everybody is aware of the facts and the myths and the, it's just been very, it's been very difficult. And so hats off to you, I don't know how we would have got through this as a district without the leadership from you and from your team. It's been hard, it's been hard for everybody, but again, the way that you have kind of poured yourself and the way that your team has poured themselves into this year is, I think, is unbelievable. So nice job to all of you.
I would, I would agree with everybody and what they said so far. But most important to me is really actually that not only do you share your thoughts, but you listen, not only to your staff and students and your community, but then you also share why you're doing the things or the way we're doing things. And I really appreciate that, that just sharing a why and that everybody's being heard, and I think that's really important. So I think that, and again, I second everybody's comments here, we could not have gotten through this past year without your leadership and your team's leadership. And then also, I have Sarah and your family, because I don't know how much you've been home so much, I mean, you, I mean, once, how everything goes in the state of Michigan right now, we can figure things out, now then, boom, it changes. And then you've got to start all over again, so I, not only you, but also your family. So we genuinely truly appreciate that.
I always look forward to things that we can include. Everybody's talking about this stuff. What next, right? So in some of your self-reflections, you have student feedback as a member. I guess, talk to us a little bit about your thoughts moving forward, how you can engage students.
Sure, so one of the things that I think of from a workshop this summer, or a spring, was Sure. So one of the things that I think of from a workshop this summer, or is spring, was listening to a superintendent come out from Federal Way Public Schools in Seattle, Washington. And she has a student advisory council. And it's made up of students who are not necessarily first chair and fan or not necessarily, not necessarily academic. All-stars, which is students. And she is very intentional about finding those students and meeting with them on a monthly basis. Really just centering around three simple questions, you know, what should we keep doing to make sure that you're having a, an outstanding day as students from high school or students from middle school or Red Hawk or, or any of the other building? What should we start doing to make your day better? And what should we stop doing to help improve the quality of your, of your experience? And to me, that's, that will be, that has the potential to be a real engine for us. You know, in all facets of our work, if, if we're truly listening to our students and our students are having an amazing day. We need to first find out why they're having an amazing day so that we can celebrate those things with them. But we also need to listen to them. If they're having a great day, they're telling their parents that they're having a great day. So their parents have a greater level of satisfaction. And if our students are having a great day, they're also telling their parents that they're having a great day. And that will help because of the diverse and dynamic nature of student population. You know, that will likely create a positive flow of students maybe back into Cedar Springs from other surrounding communities. We may lose students to an outward flow. This was student choice. And so I think if we're really focused on the quality of the student day, socially, emotionally, academically, extracurricular lives, we're really going to see that positive return. We just need to listen and ask the power to it and take that feedback and do something with it. So, you know, I see an easy group going together, high school, middle school, Red Hawk. At the elementary levels, to me, the thing will be, you know, to invite the students, but also invite their parent. And so that way we will be able to get more parent, more parent interaction and engagement in the, in the work. So that's going to be the big, the big launch.
Always, I probably pay all this, putting out fires and also trying to engage everyone at the same time. We really appreciate it. The other one that I saw, which is always the, the, the student success or the gauge that really, it's, it's based on student performance. How do you address a lack? That was another. As always, we need to improve, but yeah, what, what's your thought on?
Yeah. I mean, I think whenever you have gaps in performance, and I don't say gaps in student performance because it's gaps in our district's performance, right? It's not just on how well our students perform on the test. It's how well we do, it's how well we do as an organization. And so it's making sure that, you know, we're providing our teachers with the resources, the curriculum, the materials, the vision, the program, the consistency that they need from grade level, grade level and from academic area to academic area to provide that guaranteed viable curriculum so that everyone knows what it is that's expected of them and everyone is supported with the resources and with the professional development that they need to really excel in the teaching of that content. And then it's also about being very, very mindful of providing supports as needed for students who may need a little extra time with a particular area of content. Or, you know, maybe it's just a particular lesson that they're doing. So it's, it's really individualizing that instructional experience so that we can help get our students from where they are to where they need to be. You know, but it starts with how, where are we doing? It's not about, it's not student achievement. It's our district's achievement. And we all need to own it. Yeah. Because we're all measured by the same, the same scale. But some things aren't, some things aren't necessarily measurable the same way that we use words. And so we really need to think through a picture and make sure that our schools are thriving and our staff are thriving.
So you mentioned the tests. Typically, we do base kind of that evaluation marker on a lot of those state tests. This year, we've been, in part, we're quite, we're, I think, most of them. And we took a lot of them. We can some of that feedback back already. Does that affect next year?
So we, I've not seen any results yet from the spring.
I think it's typically.
Yeah. Yeah. And so you're really, when we measure our student, our, our growth, we do a comparative analysis with regional schools to see how we're doing with our neighbors. But then also we take a broader view and we identify similar districts from associate economic and just general community condition perspective. And then we measure how we're doing or compare how we're doing as to how those, those districts are doing as well. And we're not, we're not, we're not ahead of the curve yet. We're in the path. We're not the, and we need to move. When we get there, then we'll start high fiving each other. We're just not there yet.
Always short, short high fives. Get out the foul. I really want some of that.
But I think that's where, you know, comes in and TLC leaders come in and the principals come in, you know, that's, that's when we, we really have to look out. And make sure that we're doing the right things, we're providing the right materials, we're providing the right professional learning so that they know how to, how to best turn the greatest impact out of that, out of that work. And then continuously check in with our students, how they're, how they're doing. What are they thinking? What are they experiencing? What's the data telling us? And then what's the data that really tells us? We're not there yet. But we'll get there.
I'll say it again. That's it.
Okay. We will be revisiting this again during the action portion of our meeting. So thank you, everybody, for your input. So we'll move on to our added items, and that is the 2021-22 municipal disease face mask testing indexing protocol. And Scott will be present in your site.
Yeah. So we're getting several calls from the community members on a pretty regular basis, just asking what our plan is for the fall. And what I'm doing tonight is just, I've got an email queued up and ready to go. I can send it after the meeting. But I just wanted to get some feedback from the board before we hit go and hit send. You know, currently, all of the Michigan Department of Health Human Services orders were lifted as of last Tuesday. And so on Tuesday morning, when our students arrived on campus for summer school, the face mask was an option for students. And, you know, just as it was back on March 12th, 2012. You know, if you think back pre-pandemic, a parent could have sent their student with a face mask if they had a cold or if they were looking to, to avoid transmission of a virus or a germs. I'm not saying that that's an effective or ineffective way, but the parents had a choice to make that decision back on March 12th. My recommendation is absent any further mandate or order, that that would be the approach that we're taking. You know, parents pre-pandemic were given the choice as to whether or not they were vaccinated. Parents pre-pandemic were given the choice as to whether or not they would send students in the winter with boots or sandals. They were given the choice to wear a coat. They were given choices. And so absent any, any rules or any orders of government state, my, my thinking is that we go back to how we were on March 12th and put that choice back into the hands of our families. Again, barring any or. And so what I'd like to do is get any thoughts and then send this email out tonight if there's anyone like that's the right direction to take.
I'm super glad that you like the idea of parents' choice. I support your actual. I do too.
Yeah, I completely agree. Face masking to vaccines, all of that. Very, that was like 100%.
Know where we are thinking, but yeah, we hope they doesn't.
Yeah. So the email that will go out is a two pager. The first page is just overview. The second page is just breaking ass questions that, that hopefully help to just clarify if there's, if there's any other question.
You, at this point, I have no plans for distancing of any sort or all the mandates are off. So, so what about something specific like distancing?
Yeah. So mandates are off. We, we really want to approach keeping our students and staff healthy the way we lived back on March 12th, 2020. You know, we'll encourage people to wash their hands. We'll provide as much space as possible. We'll provide as much air circulation as possible. We can do things to help be healthier.
And we're going to remind parents that sick kids shouldn't come to school. Whatever it says.
Yes, I, I too, in the camp of putting in parenting.
Just a question, Scott. I think the letter is excellent. So I mean, that's what we're talking about. But I know we did get some feedback, Andy, that some parents didn't know how to go about doing an exemption for vaccines. Do we have that information that they call a student mask? We can point them in the direction of.
Yeah, we do. Or so typically what happens when, when, so our enrollment, our students, people come, helps to make sure that, you know, vaccines are taken care of through the health department. If there's any gap, if there's ever a gap in the vaccine record, then the building at which the students enroll, that, that building administrator or secretary would reach out to the families and help connect them with the health department so that they can either go through the process of getting, getting a waiver or getting those vaccines taken care of. So it's really not a waiver that we issue. It's.
Right. Yeah. I just didn't know we connected parents to that process because they, they might not know how to now.
Yeah. So we pointed it to the health department.
Uh, sure. Have you, you addressed summer school and everything's kind of lifted. Are you seeing students coming with, with masks though? What does that, what does that look like?
Yeah, good question. Just a few. And it looks like if you are, if you're, if you've been with me or, you haven't heard.
Yeah, I'm, I'm definitely in support of the parents' choice. We've learned quite a bit from everybody in the past years and hopefully we can take that knowledge and move forward.
That's a good question. Again, it's kind of gullible, but there was some conversation about some students that may not feel like they may not have the information to feel like they can return to life at home. Uh, because there was a lot of scary stuff or, or shared, but then the, you know, war is over information hasn't really been shared the same way. So how do we go about informing these students where they can feel like they can kind of re-join their peers in a normal way? So for the same reason, we were very careful about informing about vaccines and testing and, I mean, that's not our roles. Okay. Yeah, I know. It's all parent choice. I just didn't know some of that information that we said we got.
We don't know the, what's going on in their house.
Okay, I see. Okay. We saw a mix of the league too, to help them, helping other league. And we've seen a mix there too. So, yeah, I just was curious. We didn't know what to do with that either, trying to discuss it. So I just spoke to her. Yeah, the, the most volatile responses I got from families was when we would share information just as, you know, trying to just be helpful, but that wasn't necessarily yours.
Lucky to proceed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for bringing it. It's another piece of content. All right, we'll move on to our public comments and sometime we'll hear publicly if they'd like to support. And I have one notice to speak that would be Mrs. Smith, Sarah. So if you would like to, just for your three minutes, you don't need to, you're fine.
But, um, I just want to say I didn't get the information that I'm going to speak on until like literally before I left the house and I was like, are you kidding me? So, um, I want to pick. Um, it was the K I S A, a claim to statement. Okay. And that looks like it was signed on June 5th by your spouse, Matt. Um, when I'm reading that, and again, I literally quickly read it, um, and we met last week in a different forum that where we can talk back and forth. And when I read this, this is critical race theory. It may say that E I D, whichever order those are in, but I know that is the exact same thing as the C R T here. Okay, I mean, right. But I kind of disappointed or upset that we talked about this last Monday. And it seemed like you were on the page of, yes, we don't really want critical race theory. Then I get this in my, um, the statement saying that you've already signed it June 5th. Why? I don't understand why. And I know you can't talk to me right now, but I don't understand why you wouldn't have said at that public gathering that we had. Well, this is where I'm going with this. The one thing I want to say about critical race theory is if you take out where it says, if you're, whatever it says about being white and being privileged and blah, blah, blah. If you switch that word around with black, African American, Mexican, whatever other race there is, instead of it saying white, it's now racist. So you can't tell me that this isn't racist. It's very racist. It just switches which race. But what I was brought up, and let me tell you, my parents are both gone and I was, they were 42 and a half years. I was like, so like they're in the generation of, of where would it been racist? You don't look at color. You look at the character, their heart. You look at their, what they do, not the skin color. This stuff teaches if you're white, you're privileged. If you're black, you're not. Why are we putting the black people down? We need to bring everybody up, not put them down or not put me up saying I'm better than anybody else. I was never taught that way. When this came into my place of work, alls I did is think about that. I never thought about it for 40, I'm 48 now. I don't, whatever I am. I never thought about someone's race until the E D I came into work last year, the year before. And now all of a sudden, somebody that's particularly is a white male might not get this particular job because he's a white male and we need more African Americans, we need women. I don't care who gets the job if you are the best qualified. That's what the seat. And I'm very sad to see that you signed in agreement with the other groups that you sound like, like, again, I just got this. And so I haven't looked fully into it, but it's like you agree with what they're saying to bring that here. And I hope that's, I hope I'm wrong. So I hope you prove me wrong, that that's not what we're doing. to bring that here. And I hope that's, I hope I'm wrong. So I hope you prove me wrong, that that's not what we're doing. So, thank you.
I don't have any other. Anyone? No, we're not doing because or not.
Nope, because we're lying.
Okay, I just wanted to say, I think you said only online and I didn't know. They could register to speak ahead of time, I think, even through. Okay. Because I posted that this weekend. I just posted that it was in perfect. And I'm, oh, I'm going to do that, like, whatever. I literally, like I said.
I'm recording it in Zoom.
Oh.
I just uploaded it listening to you go over it.
Okay. And they asked me that. So I'm like, enough. So I hope that it didn't go, or it's going to be. Okay, that concludes public comment. We'll move on to our action items. And our first action item of for tonight is the 2020, 2021 final budget resolutions. And entertain a motion for as presented.
So.
Support.
Second.
Okay, having that Vice President Schochter.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Revard.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed. Yes. Budget resolution is approved. Second action item is 2021, 2022 initial budget resolutions. Now entertain a motion for as presented.
So.
Support and expression. Having none, Vice President Schochter.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Revard.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed. Yes. Motion here. The action item C is the Cedar Springs Educational Association Contract. And I entertain a motion as presented. So. Support. Any expression?
Hey, yeah, just briefly, I'd like to just thank Scott and team for putting together something that has come together to be quite a valuable tool for all of us. Like to thank you for keeping us informed and for what's going on. The changes in the different copies and the red line that I was, we knew what we were comparing to. Uh, and also for running it through the legal scrutiny that it deserves. Appreciate it.
I'd just like to share that by accomplishing that first table, you know, sounds like during the contract negotiations, you've had to have subcommittees and rest of it. That really demonstrates the transparency that both sides brought to the negotiating table and the trust that's present on both sides of the negotiating table. So I'd say great job fostering that relationship and creating a mutually beneficial contact.
All right, had no further discussion. I'll call secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Revard.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
Vice President Schochter.
I have stayed because my husband is a teacher and it's a conflict of interest.
So, you may say that we do have a forum, so the motion does pass. Thank you for that work. Oh, did I get it? All right, okay. All right.
So I, I moved to accept the count. Yes, she moved.
Okay.
There were two. Um, two supports.
Yeah, we supported the right.
That was, that was. Yeah, you're right. You're good. Let me show you. I'm ahead of myself.
That's right.
And now I'm there.
Well, sorry. We'll be sure we got it. That's.
That's every play.
I'm ahead of myself.
That's right.
And now I'm there.
Well, sorry. We'll be sure we got it. That's.
That's every play.
Okay. All right. So we can move on. All right. So our last action item for tonight is our superintendent evaluation. And we have gone through and had the discussion and we have looked at the ranking system. And I will entertain a motion for highly effective as it is for us. So entertain that motion.
So.
Okay.
God.
Any discussion?
Uh, just once again, uh, I'll keep on committing my job and just keep it up. And while we work with us as a board. Carry that through. We look for opportunities to grow. Thank you.
And, and I too would just like to begin, thank you, team. You know, things that are hard to do are, are worth doing. There's a legacy being built and see you break.
Okay. So. Motion, second discussion. So I will call Vice President Schochter.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Trustee Revard.
Yes.
Trustee Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed. Yes. And with that is unified assessment of this board that Superintendent Smith continues to provide outstanding leadership in the execution of the mission of Cedar Springs Public Schools with a rating of highly effective. All right, that concludes our action items and we'll move to our work session discussion. Please, we can sit back in our chairs a little bit. And first up, we have MTSS update with Jen Haberman. And Steve Johnson is joining us via Zoom. So you'll see him in a moment. Um, and our slide will, I have a whole group of people helping. Um, so we did it with the in more books, but, um, twice a year at least, we try to update the board on our MTSS work as a reminder that it's multi-tiered systems of support. And it really, this year has fully aligned with our continuous improvement process, which used to be called a school improvement plan. And now it's called a continuous improvement process. Um, so we have two goals that we'll be working on over the course of the next year. Really, we have more than two goals, but both of them are aligned very closely with what's planned. And you will see that today. So as a reminder, an MTSS framework is based on these five different tenants of database decision-making, a tiered delivery system, team-based leadership, collection of implementation of instruction and intervention and support, and then a comprehensive screener and assessment. Sequence that we work through. And you'll see on the next slide that, that is all very much aligned, all the yellow highlights are aligned with our like goals. So as you all highlighted as part of Scott's evaluation, this is very much also in alignment with our. Now I'm going to let Steve take over from here, some celebrations from the last several years and a peek at the work to come over the next year.
Absolutely. Thank you, Jen. Um, so we really did accomplish quite a lot this year. Um, lots of celebrations to share. We kept it to three slides, so I'll try to keep it brief. Um, and the first really significant academic move that we made this year was the adoption and identification and adoption of the tier one evidence-based reading resource that all of our K5 students will receive. Um, that really is the foundation of any solid instructional platform is having a good, solid tier one resource to utilize. Um, the, the really good news on top of that is that almost half of our K5 teachers have already been trained in that resource and, um, ready to hit the ground running on, uh, the first day of school. The other, um, half of our teachers will be trained in August. Uh, but again, plenty of time to, um, get the ball rolling on August 23rd, um, for all of our K5 students. Another real celebration we have is the assessment, um, system. We integrated a new reading assessment this year with the Acadians Assessment. Um, and we really, um, kind of honed that down and made it really efficient. Uh, in May, we assessed almost 1,300 students, uh, face-to-face, one-on-one, both our um, in-person and our Red Hawk Online students with almost no instructional time lost. And that just gives us a wealth of information, uh, that helps us identify, um, best instructional practices and our needs as a district. Um, this next slide, you'll see our tiered fidelity inventory. Um, that is a self-assessment that each building uses to, um, kind of get a sense of where they are with their MTSS systems. Uh, 70% is the threshold and that's what research tells us will really help us move the needle with, uh, behavior outcomes especially. And you'll see that every single building there and every single school is above that 70% threshold. Not just that, but if you look at these percentages, every single building, uh, that's a, that's an all-time high for every single building this past May. So, um, it just really is a testament to the building leaders, our MTSS coaches, our MTSS, uh, building teams, really keeping that work in front of them and putting the focus on it. And you can see that by the data, um, there with our self-assessments. Um, the next slide is a district level, um, self-assessment. Again, that threshold is 70%. Um, that's where we can see, um, the, the greatest impact for positive outcomes. And, um, each of those assessments has been increasing incrementally. Um, and we're at 76% as of February. So again, an all-time, um, high there for us. And it just tells us that we're building the systems and building capacity so that they, we can do this work efficiently and do this work well.
Steve, I would add, um, one of the big celebrations this year is that even in the face of strong adversity with COVID, we were able to still make improvements as a team. And when our MTSS teams celebrated at the end of the year, that was one of the things they brought forth was we still kept going. We still kept improving. We still kept the important things right in the forefront. So thanks to Steve and the teams that did that work.
Yeah, absolutely. And it, it seems to go without saying now, like, yeah, the past year has been unbelievable in terms of the challenges and the barriers and we're still, um, we're still moving ahead. So it's, it's, it really is something to be proud of and really something to celebrate. Yeah. Um, so then, you know, I think Scott said it, it really well earlier. We're not where we want to be yet. And so what are we going to do in order to get to where we want to be? Um, K12, we just have a lot of work ahead of us. You'll see some themes here in the next three slides. Um, one of the themes is just continuing to strengthen that foundational curriculum that we have. Um, not just with reading and academically, but with our behavior approach in our social emotional learning also. Um, another theme is that beginning to look at strengthening our tier two and tier three systems of intervention for the students who need more support. Um, for the students who that foundational level just isn't enough and they need a little bit more. So those are some of the things that we'll be looking at also. Um, we are, another theme again is data. Um, and really looking at data, uh, in a, in a systematic way. Um, at the building level, actually at the district level, down to the building level, down to the grade level and the classroom level. So lots of structures that are going to be, um, uh, that we'll be moving forward with, uh, to help support the data analysis. And then, you know, the, the really important part about data analysis is what do we then do with that data? And how do we shift our instructions so that we're, we're taking that data, seeing trends and seeing patterns and then basing our instruction on the data trends that we're seeing. Um, and that really is, if you go to the next slide, Jen, that is a K12, um, kind of a theme. So um, again, with six through 12, we're looking at, um, tier one positive school climate, which really focuses on behavior and social emotional line. Next year, um, we are looking at adding some reading, um, systems to our secondary buildings. Again, the intervention systems and then looking at how, um, how we're analyzing data and what we're doing based on the data that we're seeing. Um, and then the next slide really is just more of a district level focus. Again, fidelity of systems. Jen talked a little bit earlier about merging the MTSS with the continuous improvement and school improvement. That is, that will only increase our efficiency, um, to help move the outcomes in a more positive direction. Fidelity of the data collection, continuing to monitor our assessment systems so that we're not, um, we're not gathering data just to gather data, but we're actually doing it in an intentional way and in a way that will help us address the needs of our students. And then our coaching system, um, you know, just kind of getting a look at clarification of what those roles are and how those MTSS coaches can help support, uh, from the district level to the building level and down, um, into the classroom. Um, and so each individual student is being supported, uh, through that MTSS system. It's really, it's really exciting work. I feel very privileged to help lead it. Um, and I'm, I'm really looking forward to, um, a year of some consistency and a year of, um, just getting our feet under us and really, uh, moving the needle on, on all these different components that, that we've got going. So.
All right, it wouldn't be a great MTSS presentation unless we were showing you a little bit of data. So this is a week at beginning of the year, all the way through end of the year scores. And it's a composite across K12. At the nine 12 plan, this is only special education students represented because it's an eye-ready test. And that's only really a K8 test. So this more represents just our gen and, well, it represents all students K8 specifically concentrated and a few students at the high school level. So you can see, we would know that things were working well in our tier one instruction that every student gets. If we were at 80% of our students being successful, we would know we're all doing the right thing. We're not there yet, but that doesn't mean we can't get there. And that's what this system is all about. So you can kind of see the breakdown there. You can see that we definitely have improved outcomes from the beginning of the year to the end. But we still want to be at at least that 80% or more. When we say we want all students to be successful, we mean we want all, all of them to really find success in what we're doing. So those are the data points that will come back to me year after year to just compare ourselves. And we do get this data three times a year with eye ready. That really helps us to examine, are we on the right track? Are we seeing improvement as the year goes on? And helps us to identify the students who need a little bit of additional support at the tier two or tier three level. Tier two would be more support from their classroom teachers typically. Tier three would be more support from a specialist sometimes. So that's really kind of where we are as a broad overview. And I would love to answer any questions that you might have and Steve can probably join us as well. So looking at that, so I'm looking at, um, how we identify these students that need that MTSS. So, and, and so it's two parts. How do we identify them and who's, um, triggering or identifying the student? Get help. And at what point of beginning, middle or end of year, obviously, but what is the the timeline to get them in pipeline for that sort of work? So hey, that's a really great question. And I think one that is an ongoing, ever-evolving thing as we learn about these systems. We will use these end of year scores to drive what happens at the very beginning of the year next year. So we can tell right now that one of the things we need to do is improve our tier one instruction that all students get. When we have 50%, we cannot intervene our way out of that. That's too many students to do intervention with. It means really something different needs to happen in the core classroom in order to help more students be successful there. And so the adoption of our CKLA um, resource is one step in that direction. And the screening that teachers will have along that path is one step in that direction. That's the reading lane. In the math lane, we also are, um, our teachers are going to begin to learn about something called AVMR, which is the Math Recovery Program. We have a K5 math committee as a part of our continuous improvement work with two teachers from each grade level and a special educator from each building as well as principal and district level representation. And they're going to be working on what are we doing for tier one math? So you might know that over the course of the last many years. So you might know that over the course of the last many years, we have about forty percent of our teachers who are in computer screen. And in some of those windows of time, in the last four or five years, there are some gaps in what training we offer. So we're going to try to shore that up over the course of the next year so that everyone could feel highly effective in application in the classroom because they had the right training in order to do so. And there are a couple of bodies that work at the state level that identify what are early math and early literacy essential practices. So we want to start to teach those and help monitor those and help coach through those and support through those in the classroom. So when Scott said it's not just student outcomes we're looking at, it's the whole system, all of us. What are we all doing? Every one of us will play a part in that. So those end-of-year scores will help drive placements and specific interventions that will happen, especially for our students that are further than one grade level behind. Those would be the ones that would be identified right at the beginning. They've already been flagged right now for what will we do in the fall. And then once we have that fall data, we'll have eye ready at the K-five level. We'll also have Acadian, you heard Steve talk about that. That gives us more fine-tuned, specific information about what specific part of learning to read does that student have a gap? So that we can start to address that. We have that data set as well from the end of the year. So that will help drive the interventions that happen at the beginning of the year. And then we do progress monitoring between beginning, middle and end. So we try to every three to five weeks, are we doing something that's working? We don't want intervention to be a life sentence. We want it to be, we intervened, it worked, and now you're back into tier one with no additional support because you're back on track. We want to do that as quickly as we can in our system so that we don't have students going years and we have to.
So it'd be too much for everybody to say, one eight hundred call Steve.
Thank goodness we get him.
So, so if I, so when I, they're identified, I mean, how it goes from the teacher identifying and then goes to a MTSS coach or just what?
Okay, so that's part of the grade level problem solving piece that Steve mentioned in one of the slides. So teams will be looking at their own data set and they're being, they're getting some learning about how to interpret that data set. They, they got quite a bit this last year and will continue to support that over the course of the next year. So it's individuals looking together as a group at here is all of the data we have. What trends do we notice? Who are, since there's a protocol that we're using that helps them identify who are the specific ones that need extra help? And how would you improve them? So that they're getting some group help or some individual help depending on how the data trends flow. So individual teachers with the help of, we hired, we have an early literacy coach with help from the ISD and our early bridge grant. And we hired a literacy champion this year. And both of those people will be helping teachers to identify. The principals have all been trained in that as well. And then we hired a math champion this year as well, who will serve in that role in the math. You're welcome. Steve, anything to add there?
I don't, I don't think so. The only thing maybe I would add is the Acadian's reading assessment that we integrated this year really does a fantastic job of identifying, like Janet said, what are those specific pieces of foundational reading skill are the students missing? But also, you know, those assessments can be given every week, every two weeks, depending on need, to make sure that what we're doing is really being effective. And that I think is the power behind that particular assessment is it just, it does such a good job of tracking progress and tracking growth so that we know our kids are moving in the right direction. And if they're not, then we know we need to do something a little different.
And just so you don't have the picture, I mean, I think many parents might have a picture of an eye-ready assessment in their head and think about how long that might take or a state assessment that might take multiple days. This Acadian's assessment is one to two minutes, one-on-one. It's very quick. So it's not days of assessing and much instructional time taken up. Like Steve said, for the three times a year piece, we did it without really losing any instructional time at all. Because we had a sleeper team come in and do all class within a twenty-minute span and then they were right back to class.
Yeah, I was, I was just going to mention that our, our, you know, we can assess a classroom in fifteen minutes, twenty minutes. It's just really quick and efficient and it just gives us a ton of information that is just really valuable.
What other questions would I need?
Thanks, Kevin. I love the continuous improvement idea. And I think that's great. The question I have is when you're at fifty percent, four percent or, there's a lot more active than that. So how do we, I guess I just want to see a huge improvement right now. I know that's not going to happen. But how, at what point do you say, okay, we've acted and we, and we've planned, we, we've got to, I don't know, do something else. It's way too early.
It is. Yeah, implementation science would tell us that it's going to take three years before we see that kind of a discrepancy. We should see some notable gains and we'll be celebrating those with teachers. I think it's important to catch wins and put those out there for people to know we are, we're winning in things. There's things that we're making great work. It's also partly making sure that we have fidelity. And that's part of that tier fidelity inventory that Steve showed that we were all above seventy percent. It's doing some, these things are, we're going to be super clear, these things are required. These are expectations that we have in the class. These are expectations that we have with intervention. It's building the system so that if a teacher says, I don't know what to do, we have support in place for that teacher. It's not something that's changeable, it's something that we embrace in organizations, we want our. So building that system is going to take us years. And we'll keep getting better at everything from here. And we'll be mindful to share the risks with you all too when we do this again. We hope to celebrate bigger improvements going forward.
Do we see different results based on grade level? Because I know we had talked as a group, once there was a, a group of kids that needed some help to close a gap. So do we see the same disparity, that same group move forward and still struggle? Or do we struggle even if they have cross support?
It's interesting because at the kindergarten level, we see less struggle there, but also the rigor is lower. As kids move through our system, their scores tend to go down each year, which is a sad fact. We would hope that it would be the opposite, that they, that what we're doing helps more to improve. So we're hoping that that will be the trend that we see going forward as we get some tier one things under control. We also have, honestly, you've heard us present on this, we've not been teaching the science of reading kinds of things in our foundational K-three, four, five years. So if a student is deficient in those foundations, they will struggle all the way through no matter what we do. So catching those as early as possible gives them the best chance. And the similar thing is true with math, making sure that we have some foundation. So our hope is to get those things, you know, really nailed and having every teacher feel really great about that so that we know that we are doing everything we can to ensure that. Thank you, Steve.
Thank you very much, Steve.
You're welcome. Thank you.
So, okay, got it. So this is just the first quick conversation, just to put it on the radar. So we currently have a levy for a building insecting fund that we collect. It was approved in twenty twelve, so ten years ago, is a ten-year levy. And it's coming up on the end of that levy. And so we need to have a conversation about, you know, do we go to our voters and ask to renew that building insecting fund to continue to do more projects on campus? Or do we let that fall off the catch? And so we wanted to add that conversation with you. If we do in fact want to go forward with a renewal or ask our voting for a renewal, then we would have to be putting some things in place and giving some, making some contacts with the team of true law to help us with ballot language and that type of thing. And that, that work would really have to be happening in the process in order for us to get a question.
Yeah, for sure. So the deadline for filing, if you can't come to get this in the ballot like it's August third. So we would need to take action or change the laws in order to do this. It's a long one, sinking fund as you all know, it's been pulled back a few times, about oh nine six. About one of the last two digits, but it's been pulled back and we've got the next roll, then let's say five nine six eight one. But lesson one, we built up for it on the mill. Something we thought we would want to do, one thing that's working already. Over the past ten years, we have used that to keep roofs and repair as well as many other aspects. But when it was originally passed, you could not use sinking fund dollars for technology. Since then, that, that language has been increased so that education technology can be included in sinking fund eligible purchases. We were never able to do that because it was not included in the language, the original election, names out of that. But it's something to be mindful of that as a one-on-one district. We had the SFR funds, we will have the SFR funds for years, few years to come, that we can replenish our supply of phone books. But looking at past twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, you know, the absence of the sinking fund goes to the general fund dollars.
Yeah, so student technology would be a big part of the program that we did help support. You know, while we have a significant bond project that we're, that's underway. You know, that project does not, it addresses kind of the major pieces in various buildings, but it doesn't necessarily address, you know, all the needs in every building. So, you know, furniture replacement, you know, that should be done on a regular cycle. Carpet replacements, those types of things, most of all be happening on a regular cycle. And again, while the bond allows us to do certain levels of that work in the different buildings, it doesn't, it doesn't allow us to do that. And so the building insecting fund would help us get closer to that, that level of having a, a routine investment plan in our, our buildings to have a positive impact on student experience. You know, furniture upgrades, those types of things.
Oh, what ballot will we have? What?
Yeah, so this summer, twenty twenty-one, sinking levy is going to be the best. Thanks, Miller, this is on. So in order to get it on the November twenty-one ballot, because it expires technically December twenty-one. So to make it a renewable, not a tax, so we would need to have that. Does Ken have a schedule of all these things? Carpets and chairs and replacements in each building and what time frame? So can we report it based on his plan for the next ten years? Or do we not get to that point? Do we know that now?
So there were many parts of our work that were abruptly put on pause last month. In the beginning of the year in twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, Jeff Mavick and Ken and other members of the team drafted a fight plan around our facilities. And curb appeal was one of those elements of that plan. That's something that's on the radar that Chris and Ken are looking at putting together. So that we've got that, that, that hard plan. You know, when, when we were doing our, they trepped within the meeting. We were doing some community forums around the bond. And one of the, one of the community members asked, you know, do you have, where is your plan? And where is your facility? And we didn't have a hard ass facility plan. So that's something that, you know, as, as we're able to shift some attention now on the things other than, you know, virus mitigation. You know, we see that coming at the forefront of the work. And it really goes hand in hand with all of the other projects that we do in the buildings.
Yeah, I mean, so not to say, we, we've had discussions between, we've, uh, furniture, classroom furniture is something that we can purchase. So we have allocated a hundred and forty thousand dollars of the general fund next year to start that process and have a renewable plan where we can, okay, we're going to take care of these classrooms this year. And then next year we'll take care of them because we know what's initially we want to give her. So that's something kind of important. We did receive, I, I received a few quotes for new monuments. That's one thing that made us grateful was our lack of consistency ourselves. And then quite frankly, they're, they're, we could do a lot more with this one. But they're kind of pressing pause a little bit by working with GMV and Triangle and Todd work. And they've said, let's pay to see all the people fighting their maybe bond dollars. You know, there's a lot of homework going on. For example, middle school, we're up there for our sons to be installed at the same time. So that's pressing pause on some of that. But then furthermore, you know, if, if this weren't to pass or if we weren't to ask the public board again, we've got a finite amount in the scene, about two million. And so it's, it's more of a matter of, okay, let's initiate a way to figure out how to spend this two million dollars really alongside of the bond work. Or is it something that we need to budget for six, six hundred fifty, six hundred eighty thousand dollars a year that's been coming? So it's a work in progress. Like Scott said, we have an end up to sit down. I know it was done right before I came, with Jeff and Jeff and instruct. So we will be going back to that. Yeah, and envision that, the bond instruction.
But the neat thing about that fight plan is it's not just Ken and Chris working around a furniture plan. It's partnering with Jen and the building leaders and teacher leaders to develop a concept for what types of furnishings do we need in a classroom? What's our uniform approach to, to outfitting a classroom? Just as we do with critical items, we want to have a plan so that our furniture experiences, we've got the right types of seating, we've got the right types of tables, accessory items, bookshelves, those types of things. We want to make sure that we've got a uniform approach from classroom to classroom around furnishings. Because that's, that's important to the learning environment. And, you know, when you don't have a plan, then you have more of a broad sale approach where people bring in items that they find over the summer and create these, you know, eclectic collections of random tables and chairs and seating and bean bags and all of those things. And so we're really trying to create a, a system that supports. that supports, you know, our learners where they are. You know, a second grade classroom will look different than a fifth grade classroom and it'll look different than an eighth grade classroom. Because those learners are all very different people and different needs and different demands for flexibility included. So it's really, it's, it's a consistent approach. It's not just a facility.
So if we had these sinking fund dollars, we knew they were coming in, then we would build our design approach, knowing what that, what that amount of income is each year rather than determining what we want and then going out and try to do that.
Yeah, and it would just help us be able to plan better for, for future projects. We have a consistent revenue stream that is out over the ratio of.
Can you explain what sinking fund? And it sounds naive, but what does that mean? Is that for this purpose of having money set aside for facilities and buildings without really having a, a use for those dollars? Is that the intent of the sinking fund?
Yeah, well, there's a lot of different ways that you can do it. I mean, you can lay that out and have a specified plan. And that would be the ideal place to help us sinking fund dollars. There's legislation tied to it, but they can't be used for day-to-day, you know, salaries or benefits or any classroom features. They're created only historically, but only to be used on repairs. Okay, so in sinking, you literally stop this sinking. So, you know, keeping general upkeep type items. And then they ran the technology piece into it because districts were having a hard time getting to those items. They would make a big purchase of Chromebooks or iPads or whatnot and then had no way in which to, you know, keep that up, you know? And so they would just fall off and, and years ago we had great iPads. Now we have no way out of the general problem. We buy and purchase more. So that's the purpose of that. I mean, there's, there's a lot of cans and cans tied to sinking fund. But no, that would be the way to do it. Be to say, you know, for example, we know we're gonna have seven hundred thousand. Every year we're gonna tie two hundred thousand of that to the tech. So we might purchase X number of Chromebooks. We may replace projectors. Whatever the cost may be, you have that plan, but then as well as actual things such as carpet and keeping the buildings concrete from sinking.
So you do as many of the permissible items out of the sinking fund as possible. And then those items that are not permissible in the sinking fund then can be used to be general fund dollars for those projects. Because you're always going to have maintenance on your buildings.
And I'm just trying to get my head around, if we know what, what dollars we have because we have the sinking fund, we can plan our repairs and work based on that rather than the other way around, plan what we need to do and figure out. And I would assume, maybe I shouldn't, your experience tells me if we try to renew it, there's a better chance than if we come back later?
Only because it's an extension of current, you know, of current debt. So it's not a new tax, it's just a continuation. And that typically is more palatable to community members versus new taxes. But again, you have to be good stewards of their dollars. You know, that's what we're, we're really trying to demonstrate as well.
So I do want to point one thing out about the sinking fund that I must. Part of that, you know, the cans and cans, you can use sinking fund dollars to repair things once they're broken. So if there's a great big crack with, you could use sinking fund dollars. But you cannot use sinking fund dollars to perform general maintenance. So it's really, really a fine line and there's, there's, you know, anytime we have something that's a big imperative or maintenance type thing, I have to make sure it's allowable for the sinking fund to put up there. So for example, if the asphalt is cracked, we can use the sinking fund to repair that crack and replace the concrete, the asphalt. But if we're just putting a code on it, we have to use the general. General.
And you, your, can you remind us? Maybe you don't have all of the projects, but over the past ten years of this sinking fund, what type of projects?
So really a great question. And quite frankly, I can only speak from my time here. I would need to look back. I know we've used it in the last year, used repairs. We used it to, we, we used it to re-strike and do some repairs on the side, on the parking lots and the type of thing. The track was a good one. Maybe four, that was before. But we honestly, we honestly have all of that.
I think that would be helpful though, kind of going forward to see what that list is. I know, I know when this originally came about, the, the community had that expectation. And it would be good to see where those, those expectations were and how we perform. So that's, that's one thing. I know at one point in time it was, and this was probably a few years now, we did have a list. I don't think it was two, three, I think it was, but an architectural firm came in here and assessed a lot of the buildings.
G M.
G M sixteen, yeah. So, which, you know, that's a very outdated, I'm sure. But that was a place of stars for my facilities. And a lot of the, a lot of the projects kind of started from that, for our sinking fund dollars. So it'd be good to kind of, when you think of that list again, just refresh our minds, but also kind of see that progress like you mentioned, Chris and Ken showed us.
So projects have been completed so far since twenty twelve. Secure building entrance improvements at the high school, Cedar Trails were red hot. Door buzzer systems in Cedarview Beach, LED light fixtures in gymnasiums, roof work at Cedarview Beach Trails High School and this building. Playground equipment, pavement work throughout the roadways and parking lots across the district. Reserving, resurfacing parking lots at Beach and Middle School, additional lockers at the high school, H-back equipment, new condensed boilers at Cedarview. Carving replacement, installing gym floors at Cedarview and Beach. The football athletic turf, the track resurfacing and describing new parking lots at Cedar Trails and Cedarview. P A system with all the schools, viewpoint systems, exterior doors at Beach and Cedarview, access controls on exterior doors.
So as, if memory serves, security was a big one. I think that a lot of what you just mentioned, the entries, the the sound system, the P A system, the, the blue.
The blue points?
The blue point system, which is again for, just includes fire comes in the building. So the fire line, that's, that's the one they call. So a lot of that addressed the security fees. And then I know another one was roads. So having, being the, the parking lot that was, all of that. So I feel like, you know, just from that list, I mean, two main things that everything feels pretty good for the other stuff in the process.
Yeah, and some of it is how you, how you write up the language and what on the sinking fund does. But in that.
And again, that was one of the ones. I don't think it really tied directly to the language of that. It was just, these were the things that were going out. Or they say. Exactly. So it would be good if we were maybe going out for those again that have a community forum of some sort to see kind of the funds that are available and what they would really like to drive. Because again, it's not, it's not coming on top of the bond, but we're just gonna cover them all. Yes, like you're. Making that clear, helping support the things that we're trying to do, the big, big ones that, you know, these smaller pair of pieces.
And I know it's a small piece, but you mentioned the community forum. You know, this is a, a great opportunity for us to listen to our students as well. You know, so to get our elementary students involved in the design and development of playground spaces. And, you know, to get our, our high school students, our middle school students involved in the process of, you know, helping to inform decisions that impact their learning environments. You know, those are all really important opportunities for us to listen and to be inclusive in our planning. And so we can get more information, young people as well for our next, I mean, duration.
The only thing I'm saying in the next question, that will make it sure all of that happens. The better question.
Well, the good news is that we just have to be. But then we would have until November to have those forums. So we still have months.
A couple of thoughts on that too. Is that, is that dollar amount the right dollar amount? That one middle village, is that the right dollar amount for the needs? You just said we, they added technology. I, I can, I can anticipate questions people might ask. Hey, would be, hey, with a big capital investment, do we still have the same amount of maintenance? Now that that is a newer asset, if they're invested into it? And then I can imagine another conversation that goes, well, now that we have more school, does it take more dollars to maintain it? And now that we have changed the definition of what could be covered and we've added all these I T assets, does that one million dollars cover it? Or are you not being a good steward of the bond money? So I can anticipate all of those questions coming at me. What do you get with this?
So great questions. We don't answer them. It's one of those things where it was a little before. So to make it a renewal, my understanding is we would need to stick with that same amount. Obviously, it, it's tough to say with the one-to-one technology and those new assets and that. Yeah, there's gonna be parts of our buildings that are new, but down the road, they're gonna need some general maintenance and those types of things, dollars and all that. It's hard to say if the dollar amount is right, we would take it and use what we, what we have. And keep in mind that is one mil, which means one dollar on every thousand dollars of equity. So if your home's worth a hundred fifty thousand dollars, it's a hundred fifty dollars to you. And you're already paying. So that's, that's kind of the value of, would be asking for a renewal versus a new sinking fund. Because then we would go back and really say, okay, we only need a half of that. We need a million and a half, you know? This one just needs to extend. And that amount goes up frankly each year because as your home value goes up each year. So is that.
So as we talked to the, you know, these people may ask us, oh, if they do. We could say, well, we're going for a million and we find that that's not enough in the future years. Then we're gonna have to just come back to the, to the public and ask for additional dollars to close that gap. But we're gonna try to close, we're gonna try to meet the needs of this guy. That's the plus.
Yeah, and we certainly don't need to ask for it.
Sure, no, for sure. No, yeah, as the building ages and things like that. But yeah, I just, just wanted to kind of think through how you guys were seeing it, renewal versus asking for it.
So the sinking fund is just something you said, it's been taking fun. Didn't use a lot of technology, now it does. But were we renewing? Does that affect the technology piece? Or we have to write, write different wording into it to make it a renewal that also adds technology?
We wouldn't use the same, but we wouldn't, we would not use the same ballot language that we used in twenty twelve and twenty twenty-one. So we would, we would modify the language so we could, could utilize those sinking fund dollars.
So by definition, still a renewal even with the wording.
Correct. Because it's something to be a problem.
Great question.
But even today, just before this meeting, Jen and I were talking about, you know, how in the future could we do a better job of, you know, recording these meetings? And we were talking about utilizing our TV production students with their cameras and their resources and tools. Those are all examples of technology. We were talking about, you know, how we've got currently Chromebooks deployed throughout the district with students, but some students might benefit from a MacBook Pro or another type of device. Because based on their program or their needs, they might have additional technology demands that a Chromebook simply wouldn't, wouldn't need. So it really would help us be more thoughtful in terms of not just providing the device, but providing the right device based on just people program. You know, Jen was talking about how needed would be to have this fleet of student technology experts, you know, who were a part of a program that was within our tech department, where we would have students working on devices throughout the day and actually learning skills that would benefit them after, after high school. And so, you know, I think there, there are elements of technology that, that we were just starting to scratch the surface on. You know, sixteen months ago, remember, we were not, being a one-to-one district was not even on the radar. You know, when we closed on March thirteenth, I believe it was Chris's first day or close to it, then we said, hey. Then we said, hey, we need to buy technology because we're gonna have to go one-on-one. You know, we're gonna be forced into that situation. And so, you know, sometimes you may change because you have to make change. Sometimes you may change because you see it as a path to provide a better quality of experience for our students. And so that's one of the things that's in component of this.
I think it's an added renewal.
I would be in favor of, yeah, sorry to interrupt. Us of the district of students.
So maybe for July, we can work to put together maybe an overview of some, some different types of things that we would utilize those dollars for over the ten-year span. Just to start framing the network.
I just wanted to back talk about maybe having students and student team here. Now, is that technology dollars that can be spent on curriculum? Is that what we've just done with that?
Well, it's technology, it would be buying the devices.
Right.
For those.
We're training those students in their course study.
Purchase technology part.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just curious, I mean, this is getting you.
Yeah, but they need, they need the tools, they need the devices, whatever. And we're gonna need people to work on those devices.
Less than.
Great, great, great. Great, thank you for bringing that point. And our next item is the handbook updates.
So what's included in Board Look is each of the building's individual handbooks. Some things that you'll see different this year compared to years past is that there is more uniformity in each of the templates. And this is really the work of, of Amy McCarthy. You know, we knew that we had some gaps in our, in our communication services. And so by bringing in someone who could really bring a level of expertise, but also a level of focus to this work, this is the, this is one of the outcomes of, of growth for our district. And so we're not gonna go into detail tonight, but just included, you'll see each of the handbooks listed. You'll see a uniform approach, a uniform kind of template for each of the handbooks regardless of the building. When you open up, if, if you download the handbook, then the comments will show up in the margin on the right-hand side. But if you just scroll through the handbook as it's currently presented, you'll see areas in which some minor mod of the. you'll see areas in which some minor modifications have been made that'll be highlighted with a little yellow, uh, kind of comment box over it. So then you hover your, uh, pointer over the yellow box, uh, it'll have any of these notes in there as to what changed in that section. And so many cases, it was just, you know, she updated the, updated the language to make it easier to read. Or maybe, uh, you know, we were, we're just in the process of going through ADA audit compliance audit. And so wanting to make sure that our handbooks are compliant with, uh, America for Disabilities Act. Make sure that we've got the right, uh, texting and different types of features that make that document, um, accessible to people if they've got, uh, some disabilities that would otherwise prevent them from just accessing the content. So really just a first view, I didn't know if anyone had any initial questions or wonders. No significant changes, uh, in, in the language. It was, this group is really more about just getting it cleaned up or doing a cleanup and getting some consistency, greater consistency of building.
I want, I saw him, like, he was.
If you download, then you'll see the, you'll see the notes on the side.
And you're looking for a clue on this next one?
So maybe it's not just providing clarity and ease of reading, we can safely assume there's really no change. Yeah, did that ever take?
No change, I mean, no change to the substance, but there may be some minor modifications to just make a sentence more streamlined, updating the dates, uh, times.
Which is not changing, but have you comments on it?
Probably.
But the time that's on press coaches, who is faceless. Yes, and it's kind of tough being online for a proportion of people. I guess as we move back into, uh, I mean, uh, I guess I've been curious.
Yeah, and a couple of things I can speak to with that, you know, we are revisiting the high school leadership team. You know, and so we're adding another assistant principal role. That individual will be, will be, uh, really focusing on, um, the overall student wellness experience, uh, but also extracurricular programming. The other assistant principal role will be focused on engagement. Um, and, um, that, no, and the other thing. I know, thank you. Yeah, so just that experience. So, you know, if, once by the time, uh, student or assistant principal position was of our attendance and discipline, right? Well, for, if, if you've got your student highly engaged, they're gonna be there. Um, they're gonna wanna be there. If the climate and culture of the building is right, then the discipline is gonna be there itself. And so, you know, we really wanna focus in on that student experience and be very touchful about that. Um, and so, you know, if, if changes are to come about, uh, being recommended next year, you know, year about this time, um, you can, if, if student voice is not a component of that change, then that should be a factor in my evaluation.
Okay, thank you. Last item for your session is emergency operations plan version two point oh.
Yeah, so we had, um, hey, we have an emergency operations, uh, group that gets together on a regular basis. Minimum we need on a quarterly basis. This year, we had two events at the high school that really gave us an opportunity to, to do some, some significant reflecting in our practice. And it identified gaps and it identified things that we were doing really well. And so, um, the emergency operations plan is something that the board, um, by law, is to act upon on an annual basis. And so tonight is just a, a first read, uh, through the, through the plan. Uh, again, there, there are, uh, what do we, some things here that, uh, if you scroll down through the overall plan, there are some, uh, pages that are blank or some elements of pages that are blank. Maybe where we need to add some staff members' names and staff members' phone numbers, but will, uh, in that we don't necessarily have all of those building role committees laid out yet. Uh, we'll be adding that, those, uh, names in, uh, when we get student, or when we get staff back on campus in August. And so no, nothing significant change in, in terms of the overall plan. From last year, we've done some things, uh, to add just some levels of clarity around some of the communication systems in that. And again, this is just the first. So, so I just did deeply into it and asked questions that are meeting July.
Maybe, when does this have to be done by?
Just annually.
Annual.
So if you are, we're dumbing into it after. Make it sense that question ahead of time.
I haven't invested in details, so I'll break it to that. Have we seen as a, you know, as a nation or as, as Michigan, have we seen schools take, uh, any large kind of sweeping changes toward their security in recent years with some of the. Know about sweeping changes, um, just continuing to learn from each other and learn from those critical events that, um, allow us to get that, you know? So for example, when we had the, the campus evacuation, uh, in March, you know, we only had our students, our sixteen, twelve grade students on campus. But in that event, while, um, our reunification site was adequate for the students that we had during that morning, it would not have been adequate if we had had all of our students on campus. And so it just gives us a chance to really think, okay, you know, let's, let's rethink this. Let's get, let's come up with another plan, uh, that has greater capacity than we would be able to. You don't necessarily wanna go into a, I heard about that was one plan. You wanna have options within your one plan and have those spelled out so that when you're in the heat of the moment, you're not thinking of options. You're, you're evaluating the options that you already considered and picking the best one you're going for. Because time is, is critical.
More sweeping changes of that infrastructure, things like this.
And I think also working from, um, a social emotional perspective and being into new experience and really working with the papers. Like, there's still a lot of attention on you now.
And the follow-up, you know, the social emotional follow-up for students, for staff, for parents. Those events, whether, even if they're just, uh, even if they're just a random, someone that doesn't even know anything about our district, they're still from that. You know, even if it's just someone who's, you know, sitting in their basement in the middle of, you know, Wichita, Kansas, uh, it was three thirty in the morning and they're eating Cheetos and saying, they're gonna send a text that Cedar Springs Public Schools, high school, you know, those are real, you gotta take those things. Thank you. But training for staff. In all aspects. Very appreciative of that. I think that's one of the things. Or.
Read, yeah, one hundred thirteen page.
Yeah, one hundred thirteen pages, though, it's from, I'm wondering when an event occurs and somebody pull up in the annual and start looking, okay, what are we doing in this? What do you mean that? So it's not, it's not subjected to one person in the memory of, of one of our processes.
Correct, yeah. And that's one of the things, you know, once we get your approval, then we'll base such, you know, the minor changes. And then get the new changes out of the. I thought it was part of the trade.
Whatever's in charge flipping through a hundred.
But, but it's just a way of ensuring that, that did occur, that's exactly the place. The people who we thought really need to book out.
I mean, one question that does come to mind, I haven't read it, so this is, this is not really a comment. I mean, even churches have armed response teams. And I know that schools, I have not seen schools really go back for help. Um, but as a parent, I would feel more comfortable if that were the case, because I don't even know if that's people. Um, and we have a lot of buildings for one officer to cover. And Tom is a great job, but imagine if there was an issue where there were multiple buildings. Is, does in this plan include any of those kind of response teams being trained or authorized? And they're called the Kent County Sheriff's Department, I mean, local law enforcement. Okay, so there's no, there's no local. Okay, and I don't know if there's any schools doing that, I just sort of asked before I get into the fourth page. And I know, I know right now, I think our plan is isolate, lock down, secure, close the lights, you know, you kind of shelter in place. And I think that's really best practice, but I just figured I would ask the question before I dig.
Yeah, we found there are two events that, you know, the response time is with their hits. I mean, we had, we had armed law enforcement on campus at the ready. You know, and, uh, security.
And there's stations, there are some stations, other stations.
Correct, yeah, that's very reassuring, seriously, that's very.
It's literally, it was literally. And even in March, you know, we, the Kent County Canines moving, the bomb detecting, uh, the Canine was deployed on, uh, in, in Ohio on that day. Um, you know, we had a, a tour from Traverse City. From when they left Traverse City to get to here was ninety-three minutes. And they had a dog on stage. So usually, at least for me, when I drive from Traverse City, it's two hours and thirty minutes, but I do stop for less than a quarter. So they're not worried, so they will move it.
And I think with that blue system, it's one of those, almost like a silent alarm when that's triggered, it goes straight dispatch, kind of, it just goes straight dispatch. And then they just, from everywhere they come for school.
And he does a great job, I don't know if that's gonna cross, I think Tom does an excellent job, I just wonder if it's multiple two.
Right, I have to lose this stuff, because I think, are we the only one, because it was MSP grant, right?
Correct.
I think we're the only school in Kmart that have it, or? And so I think it's, uh, I think it's great.
Yeah, for sure. How, how do, how do I really know that?
All right. We'll move on then to communication and from the Board of Education, um, from my perspective, I'll just say that our research, everybody keep your, more reading for the, uh, critical race curations, you know, that are coming. And of those questions will be, you know, being asked of us. So it'll be a process, um, can't, we can't, you know, we can't lose that social, that's just reality. But we can, we can be aware and be, and be ready to act as soon as we can. So that would be my communication piece of that. And maybe we should report and share everything pretty, pretty much up there. Yeah.
I wanna thank you, uh, individually for your commitment to this work. It is not easy for you either this year. I don't think any of us signed up for the level of, um, challenge, complexity, wonkiness that we, uh, embraced, uh, over the last fifteen months. But I commend you for your commitment and your accessibility to us as well. There was never a time when I reached out that I didn't get immediate response or a go. Uh, when I asked if you could take a quick call. Um, and so this team just appreciates you and we're, and it's not just this team, it's that team that appreciates you as well. And it, it is a joy, so. And it's fun to just think that it just is.
All right, next item is planning. And our next two meetings in July are July twelfth, forty-sixth, and we can hear the board room. So schedule the conclusions appropriately and cookies. All right, so thank you for being here tonight. And I do thank you for your commitment and also the same for me, our response team. I know I can only call, um, if I have a concern or I need your input. And I can do the all the other careers, but I'm gonna work. And with that, we will stand adjourned at eight forty-two. Thank you.
Thank you.